Call the meeting to order.
I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. Move in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So our main topic tonight is capital financial planning. And the town manager and I, and then with your consent, decided that it would be a good idea to have a meeting to focus on our vehicle replacement schedules and our potential paving costs that are coming up in the near future, in the next five years, is that the really worst of it, to make sure that the public is aware of what we're facing, the costs of things that are these days, and the actual, in my opinion, apparent shortfalls in our reserve accounts, to satisfy those needs. So I'm gonna start off with, since police is right in front of me, let's start off with police. The bottom line with police is it just doesn't add up. If you're funding to replace a car every other year, you have four cars and you want to replace all four cars in a six-year time span, that equates to one every 18 months, not one every 24 months. So I don't know, Mike, I just got this, so I haven't had a chance to massage it at all, but does this reflect the need to replace four vehicles every six years?
There's a gap on one of them. If you look through the, if you can read the I chart that's there on the replacement year, there's nothing listed for 2027. And I talked to Justin today about it. And so there's one gap. And what I did on this is I did two different versions of this. I did the one like we did with the highway where it's, say it's a five-year period, so how much would it cost per year if it was split up over a five-year period? And the numbers come out worse than the one that you're looking at right now. So the numbers that, the one I just provided to you, if you look at the larger page, the one on the ledger paper, and there's a red, the red block indicates the year that the vehicle would be replaced. So the numbers at the bottom, that totaled to the bottom, these were better numbers, I'll say better, lower numbers than the one else, otherwise. So that's why I presented you this one, because I figured you'd want to see that, how to get to the end state with the least amount of money.
This larger page is a six-year replacement?
It is, it's a replacement plan for four vehicles. And you'll see, like, if you read the, gosh, if you can read it, the very top row is a 2023, it says Ford Explorer.
Yep.
That's the one that they're replacing, that if you approve it tonight, that's that vehicle. So if you look, if you follow that, the replacement would be in 2029. So it's out one extra year to make all this fit in, the Jenga puzzle that we've got. So if you follow that top row across where it says FY '24, and then it says FY '25, if you add those two numbers together, it will equal what that car is that the police department's asking you to grant the purchase, right? So then there's a gap in year three, and then over a three-year period, it starts building up money again. So on that fifth year, which would be, the red block is 2029, that would be the next time the vehicle gets replaced. So on that, on that cycle. And then you can follow it across. I had to, I had to move some stuff around to make the numbers work, or otherwise it wouldn't, with a, with a gap in there, it wouldn't have worked very well. But this will allow the police department to trade out those four vehicles on a kind of a consistent rotation. Like I said, there's a gap in there because of that one year that I had to kind of overcome. But if you add all the numbers up, it equals the, this page, the smaller page I gave you on Eagle. So let's just take, on this page right here, I'm sorry, I can't put it in the screen for you, that this first column right here is that vehicle that the police department's asking you to approve. So the price, starting off, the $59,000 is what the vehicle is right now, with the upgrades to the vehicle. So it's not the base price of the vehicle, it's the vehicle plus the radio installs and all that kind of stuff, because it didn't really make sense to split that out, unless you wanted to see it that way. But, so you buy it, this year it's $59,000, five years later it's $64,140. That's how that reads. And then the, the yellow below it is over, what it would be if we split up the cost over a five-year period. So each year it costs $12,828.12 to have enough saved up in five years to replace that vehicle.
So let's, can I interrupt for a second, Mike?
Yep.
So let's go back to the bigger sheet.
Yep.
One you can't read?
The one you can't read.
Well, I can't read either.
I couldn't without my glasses on, that's for certain. So what this represents, the reserve amount each year line, which is the one, two, three, four, five, sixth line down, is the amount that we need to be putting in the reserve each year to satisfy this need. And where, and we're, right now we are putting $30,000 a year in the reserve account, is that correct?
Correct.
So in fiscal year '26, we need to put $55,000 in. Fiscal year '27, we need to put $56,000 and change, then '28, $65, et cetera. So the bottom line is, in order to achieve this, we need to increase the funding in the reserve account next year by $25,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I don't expect to have any answers today, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. And Mike, unless you have anything to add, we're gonna move on to...
I have a question.
We're gonna move on to highway after we answer questions from the board.
You've got four vehicles here.
Correct.
How many miles are each one? I imagine the chief's is probably the most, miles per year that you put on it. What about the other three, are they kind of equal?
I can't answer that. Justin's on, I'm not sure if he can answer it, like, off the top of his head, he did bring some stuff home with him, but I don't have the mileage on the vehicle, because the, they were trying to figure, the police department was trying to figure out, do we swap them out at miles, number of miles on them? Because that could really screw up a capital improvement or a capital management plan, because if you plan on every five years cycling it out, then mileage would totally throw that off.
Here's the other problem with that, is that these cars idle a lot.
Yeah.
So the car that they want to replace, the 2017, I think has 117,000 miles, is that what it says?
Around 120, yeah, something like that.
120,000?
Somewhere around there.
How many hours do you think it has?
I have no idea.
18,000.
Yep.
So most people drive about 50 miles for every hour they put on their car. We average about 50 miles an hour. If you take 18,000 hours and average it at 30, say, hey, this car only drives around the community, that's over 500,000 miles. So the odometer doesn't reflect the actual usage of the motor. So you would look at that at first and say, geez, that didn't last long, 120,000 miles on the motor, but if you figure in the idling time, it equates to over half a million miles.
What I'm thinking of, is there one vehicle that's a lot more, used a lot more, whether you're going hours or miles or whatever, are they all sort of equal?
I think they each have two shifts, right?
They do, so the chief's vehicle, he's, I'm not sure if this answers your question, so poke me in the eye if it doesn't. But, so chief's vehicle, he's the only one that drives it. The Tahoe right now, that's, because chief had assigned vehicles, and Justin drives that one, neither two are split with the other officers. So every, every day someone's on, the vehicle's getting used. How many miles they put on it really depends on what's going on that day. They could be in the office, working on cases and not really be on the road, but the car's outside idling, because in the winter they gotta keep it warm. This is all due to the air cards and the computer. That, in the summer it's being cooled, and in the winter it's being heated. So like Mark said, it's been a lot of idling time. So I don't know how they break it down, and if, Mr. Chairman, if you want, Justin to chime in, he's online.
Justin, if you have anything helpful to add, please feel free to do so now.
Yeah, roughly, roughly we're putting like 20,000 to 24,000 on a year per vehicle. Since we started assigning vehicles, we kind of limit that as much as we can. Before, we didn't really have that kind of program, this is prior to Chief Mantello taking over, everyone just kind of took the vehicle that they wanted. If it was the new car, everyone was kind of jacking up the miles on the new car. But now that we have assigned, assigned vehicles, it spreads that mileage out throughout their lifespan. So roughly 20,000 to 24,000, probably on the chief's car. But like you said, Mike, it kind of varies on what we're doing that day. We could have eight to 10 calls on a day shift, and we're running back and forth, so it's tough to say. But it's roughly 20,000 to 24,000 a year per vehicle.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Justin, just a question based on what Mark's comment. It's safe to say that whatever vehicle is quote unquote "on duty" that day is gonna have a lot of idle time as well, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it varies, like, I mean, if we're out running radar for four or five hours, like, the vehicle's obviously on and idling, because we have to have it on. But if we're back at the office, you know, things that we would idle for, obviously if it's extreme heat and we have to kind of keep it cool with the computers and the camera running and stuff like that, there would be high idle time. We try to shut them off as much as possible to limit that, but with all the electronic communication inside running, it's, it's difficult if it's high heat or low temperatures and stuff like that.
Thank you, Justin.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I'm just a little confused. We're replacing a 2017, but I don't see anywhere on this sheet where it says 2017.
It's that first column, it says 2023. So the vehicle, if you approve this purchase, it's a leftover vehicle, so it's a 2023, but you're purchasing it in 2024. And I think Justin explained that in his stuff, that he was able to knock a little about, little over two grand off the vehicle by finding the leftover.
Okay.
Hey, Justin?
Yes, Mark?
To Mrs. Harris's point, if you have an assigned car and the chief has an assigned car, they would have fewer hours than the other two cars though, wouldn't they?
That is correct. Like, for my, for example, the Tahoe that I'm assigned, like, I only have 11,000 miles on that vehicle. And the chief, like, his is a 2023, but it hit the road in 2022. So he, I think he's roughly like 23,000 miles.
So those cars get one shift a day, and the other two cars get two shifts a day, is that correct?
Uh, depending on, depending on the day of the week, yes. Like, Sunday, Mondays, and Tuesdays, we only have one officer on each day shift and each night shift. So the, the two other kind of spare vehicles will, actually, spare's not the right word, but the, the two vehicles that are assigned to multiple officers are just run one per shift. When we have double coverage, especially Monday through Friday, is double coverage during the day, so obviously the chief is on, and then that one vehicle's being used, but then that other vehicle is used at nighttime by another officer. So roughly two, most vehicles are roughly two, two shifts.
So not to make overcomplicate it, but it would seem that two of those cars could be on a longer replacement schedule than the other two. Or maybe two are on a shorter one.
And I think you'll find they are, Mark, because the first line is the one, the 2023 Explorer, that this plan assumes we're going to approve tonight.
Yep.
And that one is being replaced in 2029, whereas the Tahoe that's been here for a year is going to be replaced in 2030, and the, so if that makes any sense to you. And the chief's car, the 2023 Explorer, has already been here for two years, and that's going to be replaced in 2028.
Yep, good point. I'm, I see that now, yep, noted.
I want to thank Mike for putting all the effort into this. It, it's, the idea, the point behind the exercise is aid, come up with a plan that we think is workable if we can figure out how to fund it. So that'll be the second part, and that's the part that I wanted to make sure that everyone on this board and everyone in this town understands, that we have, we have to come up with a way to fund this.
Right.
In order to have the police coverage that we feel...
Not be in a situation where we're in right now, where we have a car that's just worn out.
Yeah. So if there's no more questions on the police, I would like to move on to highway. Robert, you listen?
Yeah, I'm listening.
This isn't so much to solve any problems tonight, as to make sure we understand where we're at.
Bring out your magnifying glass.
Well, this is one of those times when I'm glad I decided to just give up and wear glasses all the time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to, we're not approving the purchase of this vehicle?
Yeah, we are, it's on the agenda.
Okay. But you're gonna do that later on?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, that's a separate item on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna find my highway plan, here it is. So does everyone have this document for the highway?
Yes.
There's also, Mr. Chairman, there's also a copy of this, there should be a copy of that, if you want to, like, reference it for, like, what we're talking about for a vehicle, has a description inside of it. It's the Public Works Equipment Asset Management Plan Draft.
Really? I didn't get one.
Didn't have the packet, suffered by the...
It was in your packet, it was in your, well...
Well, here, I have an extra one, maybe it was yours. There you go.
There you go, mister.
There's still something in your packet, Mary Lee, I think.
I know, that's the one he told me to put in until June, June 10.
Oh, yeah.
That's the...
The sewer one.
The one he said June 10.
The sewer ordinance that we have to get up to speed on next week.
So that's why I dated it and put it in there, okay.
I have some questions for you.
Okay.
When we're asked to leave.
Okay.
Don't let me run out of here, don't you run out of here.
Okay.
So anyways, I'm not sure where to start on this, Mike, because, and I don't want to get really deep into the weeds, but if you take this piece of paper here, the one that you need your magnifying glass to read, you will see all the different pieces of equipment that are in the highway department, you know, the grader with a roller, the excavator, front end loader, et cetera. And if you look across here, you'll see what year the town manager expects to replace that vehicle. So for example, the grader, he's expecting that we will need to replace that in fiscal year 2033, which is what, nine years from now? Or 10, depending on how you look at it, nine years, right?
Yeah, I can't, I started from fiscal year '26, so that's what we can affect.
And you can go down through the next one, the excavator we're planning on replacing in 2032, et cetera. I don't see where we need to go through each line unless you want to, guys. But what this spreadsheet does is tells you what we need to put in the reserve account every year to accomplish that. We are currently putting, correct me if I'm wrong, but 100,000 a year into the reserve account for the highway department. And in order to accomplish this goal of maintenance, of replacing these vehicles when they need to be replaced, and we're hoping we can get 10 more years out of the grader, by the way. We just put, what was it, 37,000 in it in the last year? And we're hoping we can get 10 more years out of it, but that's, there's no guarantee. I mean, what do you think, Mike? What's, what's your highway foreman feel now?
Well, how he feels about the grader and how he feels about the longevity might be two different things. Everybody likes shiny new stuff. But based on the engine replacement that we had, and the, and the work that was done on it, and we do the moldboard, and we keep up on preventive maintenance, and undercoat them, and do, and do everything that we need to do, I have, I'm confident that barring some catastrophic, like, mechanical failure inside of the engine or transmission, that this will last 10 years.
And that's the biggest ticket item, but everybody...
This is had the motor done?
It was, what, three, four years ago?
17, I think it was, it's on, I think it's in the equipment planner.
Five years?
It says, it was replaced...
I know it since I've been on the board.
It's in the bottom of the thing. 2017, new engine.
Oh, yep, yep.
And they found nothing wrong with the transmission besides the, that seal that was leaking, so, and it's been working fine. We had to shim the moldboard and get, you know, replace some parts on that, because, but it hadn't been done for years.
That's just maintenance.
Yeah. I mean, the thing takes a beating when it's out there digging, so I, I don't, I don't see why this thing won't last 10 years. It doesn't have electronics and all the stuff that the newer equipment has, so there's less to fail.
Just have one question. Under the replacement year item, when you have, I assume this is what this means, when it says "used" behind it, you plan on buying used?
Correct.
In that year?
Yes.
Okay.
So the two, the two things, the big ticket items would be the grader and the excavator.
Okay.
And the dollar figures are, are kind of in line with what we're finding out there for rebuilt things or used stuff that, in like the newer vintage, like, 2017, 2018. And then, then it puts it in, that's when the, the numbers here start dropping off. So we, we have the spike to get us to that point where they get replaced. And then when you're, you take a grader into a 30-year replacement, you divide 400,000 or 500,000 by 30 years, that's when you start seeing, the numbers start dropping off.
Yeah, the problem, the problem has been we haven't been putting enough money away to cover everything for the past 15, 20 year, however long.
Yep.
For decades, that's an accurate statement, Robert.
Yeah.
So how much more do we have to put in to get us current?
So at the bottom of the, of those columns, there's, there's red and green arrows. So if you can locate the, the first, the far left red arrow, it says 175, 193 is the amount to put in there. So that's a $75,000 increase over the previous fiscal year. So the first three years, I tried to keep it around 75, and then it starts falling off. Because, because of the near-term replacement of some of those pieces of equipment, we can't stretch it out any farther.
24.
So the, the price, so I could get the price point, or the amount from the reserves down. So 75 for the first, it was 75 for the first year, 76 the second year, 77 the third year, and then it drops to 23, and then it starts decreasing. The yellow, or the green arrows are when what we were putting in would become less than, so like, the first one is $24,000 less than the previous year.
So we're gonna get hard, get hard in year 31 and 32?
Yeah.
We're doing five, five pieces of equipment?
Right.
Four, four pieces of equipment each year.
Yep.
And in order to have the funds available to do that without leasing, which is another discussion for a different time.
Without what?
Without leasing.
Because you still need a lease payment, and that's where we...
You still have to have the money there for that, too, so...
Well, for decades, we were putting 100, well, 80,000 a year into a reserve account and using that to pay two lease payments on two dump trucks.
Which I think that's what the hundred is, right?
Yeah, we're still doing that.
Yeah.
And then once the, the Baco is, that's the second to the last, on the left, far left column, the Baco, then it wouldn't be replaced. So, but we, we have a loan on that out till 2030.
That's the 7,000?
Yeah.
A year?
Retired Baco.
Yes, correct. The new, that's the new cat, that 20, whatever, I can't remember what year it was, 22 cat. So our last payment of $7,000 would be made in fiscal year 28. No, I'm sorry.
2030.
30. And then after that, it was, it's removed from the equation. And the reason it's moved from the equation is, it was originally designed to replace the one at the transfer station, but there's still, there was an argument about whether or not we should start using it up there, so we're keeping the old one going for right now. But when that thing is finally like kaput, this would be up there, and the guys at the, the crew at the highway garage would rather not replace that, because it's a lot more difficult to use. They'd rather have a little smaller excavator than they would the Baco. Because when you're doing ditching and stuff with the Baco, you can only go to the extent of the boom, and then you gotta pick up the outriggers and move it. And they said a smaller excavator would be much better off for what they do. So, but we gotta, that gives us some time to figure that out, but it, the payments are done in 2000, fiscal year 2030.
So does everyone understand what this would require to accomplish this? So to make sure everyone understands, currently we're putting 100,000 in the, in the reserve account. What this plan would require, and I'm not saying we're going to do this, we just need to understand it, is add 75,000 to the budget in this coming fiscal year, i.e. the budget that we have to approve and present to the voters. We approve it in December, January, and present it to the voters in March on Town Meeting Day, would have a $75,000 increase in just the fiscal, or just the reserve account
Plus 25 for the police department.
Yeah, and we're not done yet. And then the subsequent year, retain that $75,000 increase and add another 76, for a total of 251. And then the following year, another 77, for a total of 328. After that, it starts to level off. Now that's, the biggest reason behind that is the, the replacement of the excavator and the grader. But there's other things, you know, that, that we're gonna have a couple of dump trucks that have to be replaced in that same timeframe. So to plan for that, that's what this plan would require. I just want to make sure everyone in this room and everyone watching on Peg TV or Zoom is aware of that, or in the room. And it's a bitter pill to swallow, but I thought it was best to get this out and make sure everyone is aware. Go ahead, Mike.
I, I think that, kind of the, the take, one of the takeaways, besides the increases, because no one likes increases, is that once we get to that point where we've, we're at a sustainment period, if you look at fiscal year, you know, 30, 36 and beyond, it starts hovering around 250,000. So that's where we really should be at now.
Right.
And so it's 100,000 right now, so in, by fiscal year, what did I say, 36? You think, that's a long, that's quite a ways away, that it's $150,000 over what we would, over what we pay, we're putting in there right now. So it, it isn't, it isn't that bad if you, it's, it's that first few years that make it ugly. But I think, you know, over a 10-year, 12-year period, to raise the budget, $150,000 for major pieces of equipment, isn't that crazy? It's just that those first few years are, are the hard part.
Well, I mean, what do you do if you don't raise it? What, you don't have the funds and all of a sudden you need a grader? Then you're sitting there with, you know, $400,000 piece of equipment that needs to be replaced, and you don't have it.
We probably have good enough credit to borrow the money, but that, that leads to another issue, because then you're paying interest.
Yeah.
That's taxpayer money, so I...
Now it's 10% higher.
Yeah.
And you, you, we, the town has a failsafe. I worked it out with M&amp;T Bank. We have a line of credit with M&amp;T Bank for over, about a million and a half dollars. So we don't have to go through credit checks or anything like that. So if we ever had a catastrophic failure of something, we could borrow money, and they will, they will fund used stuff, too. So that was the good part about it, but it's...
It's still gotta get paid back. It's still gotta get paid back, so rather than doing it now, we're just pushing it out again.
Exactly.
And that's what's been, you know, we've really not done the taxpayers a great service by ignoring this for decades, but that's what this, well, not so much this board, but previous boards have done. And we're trying to get, as much as I hate, I hate to say it, that we need to make sure everyone is aware and figure out a plan and how, how we're gonna fix this. So I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions on highway, if anyone has any.
Well, let's say we have a piece of equipment that's due for replacement, Mike, and, you know, when the replacement time comes and it's still a good piece of equipment, can we push that back? And then would we be able to use that money to drop down the next year's reserve?
I think that, that's the board's decision, how they want to do that, but yes, the answer would be, if there's something that doesn't, it's still really in good shape, and you guys want to reduce the burden to the taxpayer, you could do that and get away with it, because, and another thing that's not figured in here is the trade value of the vehicles. So that's, that money, a sale from the, from the vehicles could go into the reserves and then pay down some of those years as well. So this is just the worst-case scenario, because I can't tell you what that grader's gonna be worth, especially if it has a blown engine.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta plan on...
Playing the worst and...
Some of the stuff we're using until it's not usable anymore, so resale value is probably not much of anything, you know?
And this puts it, the yellow column on the far right, that's a 20-year mark. So obviously this, what I would recommend is we revisit this every five years at a minimum to see where we're at, and then you could adjust numbers. This was, this just gets us, like, our feet in the starting blocks, really.
And we don't know what inflation's going to be.
Yeah, this is based on 2% and...
That's pretty optimistic.
Yeah, that's, that was the government's average or the government's number, so I used it. But you're right.
I tripled that last year.
I know. And that's, it's, that's why it has to, this has to be reviewed, if not every year, at least like minimum every five years. That you're looking at where we're at, what, what the status of the vehicles are maintenance-wise, prices, inflation, everything. So it, I think it's good for accountability as well. Cause now everyone's looking at, we gotta keep these vehicles running, maintenance of them, you know, being, not abusing them. And then for the taxpayers and the select board to the taxpayers is some predictability on where we're at.
My opinion is that this needs to be looked at by this board and the town manager every year, at least to, at least briefly. And then take a deep dive every three to five years as needed. Is what I would think. Does that make sense, Mark?
I absolutely agree. We can't run these departments if we don't have the right equipment. And the downtime is what's brutally expensive. You know, if we don't have that grader for the month we need it to do dirt roads, and we have to lease a machine, that's going to cost a lot, a lot of money. And then you have a machine the operator doesn't, isn't familiar with. It's just, the downtime is brutally, brutally expensive and we should avoid that at all costs.
And something like renting a grader, you're also going to wind up with transportation costs and.
Oh yeah, yes, they're going to charge you four grand to get it here and.
We can go on.
And just getting to repairs on stuff like the dump truck this winter, that was what, $20,000? And we didn't have it for most of the winter.
So the other part of this, whether this is appropriate at this conversation or not, I'm not sure what the maintenance plan is today. I don't think it's been that stellar over the last decade.
Hasn't been.
And, and we're paying a big price for that. You know, a lot of this stuff should be in far, far better shape than it is. That's gotta be addressed, you know? We've talked about corrosion protection. I don't know what kind of hourly schedule they're on for greasing this equipment. But, you know, it's gotta be less than 40 hours.
The mechanics, Evan Chalmers is heading that now. He's got his updated book and really watching how maintenance is being done on these. Because it's been, I mean, and Evan was also one of the drivers before. So he hopefully understands, you know, the reasons why we're doing it. He didn't come out, he wasn't a, you know, wasn't an accountant before this. So the, so I put on the stressing on the slides is preventive maintenance, undercoating and just.
Do they have PM set up for all the trucks?
They do, and they have a sheet, they have a book they're supposed to check. And Brent Clark started that with them. And so every day there, when they get in that truck, they're supposed to sign off on, there's, the, the thing is, it wasn't tailored for our trucks. It's on, it's, it's overarching, it's like DOT. So there's some things that we don't, we don't have, but.
As far as how often it gets greased, is that?
Yeah, it's, they, Evan has a schedule. And then they, Evan and Jeff have been doing spot checks on it to make sure that it's getting done. Cause washing the vehicles, they're supposed to wash them weekly and I've noticed that's kind of fallen off. And I got on again today about washing the vehicles. Because whether it's sunny out or it's snowing and there's salt. Whatever we, we need to do, whatever we can to expand or extend the longevity of these things. So I welcome, if you go up to the garage, talk to Evan and see what he's got for a program. But the, the culture certainly has to change with how we handle and, and do preventive maintenance on our vehicles.
As far as the care of the shop, the, the town highway garage itself, that I've noticed over the last two years, has gotten much better. You walk in there now and the building is clean. I didn't look at some of the other, you know, offices, bathrooms, et cetera. But the, the actual building itself looks like it's better taken care of than it was two or three years ago. So our subsequent two highway foremen's and the town manager being relentless on this is starting to pay off.
Good.
Things just like, it's a public building, that's why I try to stress to them is anybody can come in that building, walk in there, you don't know who it's going to be. And when the bathroom is disgusting, it reflects poorly on them and on the town. So there's, they have, they have a job, they have, they have to sign off on it now that it's been cleaned. And they got a check sheet for all of that stuff, AEDs and fire extinguishers, everything, so.
And the last time.
People keep their vehicles just like they keep their bathroom.
Yeah.
You know, and you gotta set a standard that.
I stopped by there a couple of weeks ago and surprised Jeff and asked a few questions. And I'd say they're pretty much on the ball more so, well, a lot more so than they were even a year or two ago.
We always can improve. And I think that, you know, we build a culture that people take pride in what they're, what they're doing. And understand that most of them, not, not most of them, but some of them are taxpayers here too. And how that reflects on them when that truck drives by and you ask people to vote to buy you some new equipment. The stuff that they're driving looks like it came from a leper colony, so.
And we want them to be safe.
Yeah.
I mean, we want those operators to be in equipment that's safe to operate.
Yep. We know now why that costs us so much money. Back in the winters when we had an inspection done from an external source and they found all these safety violations. It, it costs a lot of money to get it brought back up to safe standards, safe operating standards, so.
What I, what I find that works very well over to the bus garage, we have a bulletin board. And it's got all our vehicles that we have in the yard. And we pretty much have assigned drivers to it. So we have four dump trucks up there. Heath has got a certain truck. They put up on the bulletin board, the next time it needs a half-service and the next time it needs a full-service with the mileage right there. So Heath can come in and say, oh, my truck is at 237,500, it needs a half-service. He can stay on top of it too. It doesn't have to be Evan's job. Cause he, Evan's not in one of those trucks every single day looking down at the mileage.
No, no.
He doesn't have to do that. The driver of that truck needs to take a little responsibility to say, jeez, my, my truck hasn't been greased in two weeks. It needs to be greased, you know, pick up the grease gun and do it, you know?
Yeah. That's changed. They're, they're, they're the ones greasing them now. It's not Evan doing it for them.
Okay, okay, good.
And they have a bulletin board, I talked to Jeff about it like, probably like two months ago. And Evan, I don't, what I didn't want to do was, I wanted to have some ownership of this and not like force everything down their throat. I wanted them to come with the ideas of how they're going to manage this. So they've got a bulletin board up there now and like when things are due for service and.
I just, I just find it very handy.
Yeah.
I come off a trip and I hit the mileage, I'd say, hey, guys, my thing is hit, okay, we'll get it in for service before you go out again this day or whatever. It just works really well.
I agree with you.
Okay, so that's, that's a kind of a separate issue and your point's well taken, Bob. Don't misunderstand me, but we're here to discuss vehicle replacement plans. And so is there anything more pertinent to the highway from the board?
I like it. I think it's a good plan. Nice done, nicely done, Mike.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, is there anything from the public on the highway replacement plan? I realize you don't have one in front of you and Justin and Allison don't have one either. But hearing none, we're going to move on to fire department. Which does everyone have this document?
You guys read it?
Yes. You should have it in your packet.
It should say the.
Actually, you should have a new one.
Yeah.
As of today, if you cleaned out your mailbox. And if not, Mike, did you empty the mailboxes and bring them over?
Mary Lee's was the only one that didn't, that had them stuffed in it, so everybody should have them in.
So you don't have this? It might, it might be in.
It was in your packet, Bob. I put it inside your packet. So you have the most current one. I, last night I put it inside your packet.
I don't have a current one. He's got pretty colored arrows. I don't have any colored arrows.
He's like, I don't know if I got that. I gathered that one, don't I? Was it attached to something else?
No, it's folded. It should be two pages.
It was folded like this, so it looks like one piece, one page. Do a deep dive on that stack in the upper right.
Do a deep dive of this?
Please.
This is just the police, I think. Oh, maybe, you're maybe right.
I think it's any different.
It's probably, it's probably.
I bet you you'll find it in there.
He's the other one. I didn't have the colors changes either.
I don't know why you didn't get color copies.
There it is.
I, I, last night it was like 10 o'clock and I just stuffed it in there. I didn't pay attention to where it went, Bob. I just stuffed it in there so you had it. You don't have one, Mary Lee?
I don't have a current one. Mine are all little blue arrows. I don't have any. He's got several colored arrows.
I gave you this one then, cause I have an extra copy. Oh, I have all the extra copies, so maybe they're all yours actually.
Yeah, they're probably all mine. I wasn't going to give up my cribbage just.
I want to make sure everyone's looking at the same thing when we discuss this.
That's better.
If it has, at the bottom, if it has red arrows and some red writing below the other ones, that's the old one. So that's a no-go. Shouldn't have.
Is this the new one?
That is the new one. And it should say upper left in red is updated 6224.
Okay, I've got that.
6224.
With Michael Allen Jones's initials on there?
Yep.
All right, so Mike, I'm going to lead off by saying this is much worse than I anticipated. Would we had the. Let me finish, please. When we, when we had the public safety meeting, Rob and I were there. And we talked about the vehicle replacement for replacing engine six and where that money was coming from and what would be available. After that, that we had 10 years before we had another vehicle we were going to replace, which is specifically engine three.
Correct.
And I thought we were going to have the money in the reserve account with some increase, but not this much. So please help me figure out why we have to add 60,000. And then subsequently, well, basically over a three-year period, why we have to add, what, what is that? 100 and, 180, 187,000 dollars to the reserve account?
I'm looking here so I can follow along with the column here.
I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying I'm surprised.
Well, some of the stuff with moving, the stuff that's out to like 2035, which one's that one? That's the van. Where's the engine three? Well, there's no red block around engine three.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that too.
So, so, I know. So if you look at fiscal year 2027, under engine three, it says newer demo. But talking with the chief, and I think he said it during one of our meetings, that he'd be looking at refurbishment of things. So that's $400,000 kind of goes into the refurbishment model, not new. Cause you're, you're not going to replace that new for $400,000. Then, then going from fiscal year 31 to the right, which I, you gotta go to the next page. That, that would be where 1,018,000 dollars comes from. That's the cost of it 30 years later. But that's, when I did the numbers and I went, I took this right here. Everybody should have, everybody sent, Mary Lee should have a copy of this. That's the replacement schedule and I took the numbers off this and so to try to back into the.
Give that to Mary Lee, I have several of these.
On the page.
Thank you.
That, that, that package hasn't changed in the last two or three months, has it?
Um, there was, like I changed some, I said, don't print in color, Mike, don't print in color. But there is some stuff in here that did change, Dick, but it was all like admin stuff, nothing.
Cause I have, I have several versions of this in color that were a month or two or three old.
Yeah. Uh, there's, there was really nothing that was, that changed unless it was a, a date that was wrong or something like that.
Cause you brought Rob and I up to speed two public safety meetings ago? And did you get a new one then too? I did.
Yeah. And, cause none of that stuff in that, you're talking about in that first and fiscal year 26. What you, what you're looking at, I guess I should say, is this, I should have prefaced it with this, that would have been probably a good thing. If the board were to use ARPA funds to purchase those things that they've been asking for, the pickup, the UTV and that kind of stuff. All of a sudden you start into the replacement of those right off the bat. So if you bought them now in fiscal year 26, the first fiscal year that we can affect, becomes the replacement plan for those. So if you kind of go down to like the air refill station. So it would be, a new one would be purchased in fiscal year 2028. And then because it's, there's not enough time to build up that, the money, because that's what, 100 and.
113.
113, almost 114,000 dollars. There's not enough time to, to build that up before what the chief is saying, we can't get parts for it anymore. That's really what the big issue with that one is. So it would be purchasing it, kind of, well, that's not even enough to do that. 25 there, I don't know how, I don't remember what we said on that one. But it would be purchased in 2028 and then for 20 years, $5,683.75 would go in there. That, so in 20, 20 years, it would be enough there to buy another, a new one at that point. Or whatever, shift off it if it's still in good shape or whatever. But he was concerned that it's, it, they're going to have difficulty getting parts for it. That was what, when he talked to the manufacturer.
I don't want to get too deep in the weeds, but that's the one that you wrote the grant for 20 some years ago? How many years ago was that?
2002.
It says 2002 here. I'm pretty sure it's 2005.
I don't recall. I do know you were our assistant chief and we were in Elm Street.
It was a long time ago. It's a year before the tanker, two years before the tanker.
That's an 07.
Cause we got denied the tanker the first year.
And that, that's an 07, I believe, isn't it?
I was thinking six, but I could be wrong.
It says, it says 07 here, but.
That's probably correct.
One of us is right. And it's not really important either, so.
And you look at the other stuff that's on there, the extrication tools, the, so there's, they want, the longevity or life cycle replacement, that'd be 2029. So in order to replace those, because we don't have the money in there now or haven't been putting it away until this year. It was $18,000 that the voters had approved the reserve on. But that's, that was for everything. It's not just for the air refill station. So it's a small, small tools and equipment is what it was for. Extrication.
Extrication, air packs and refill.
Yeah, there was a.
Three, for that, for that reserve account.
Ice water rescue suits. So that's what, by 2029, that, that'd be the, the figure to be able to replace those. And then beyond 2029, you see it drops from down to 7,000 something, $170 for the, whatever, uh, eight to 10 years. To be able to have the money available to replace it when that time comes around again.
So in all three categories, fire, highway and police, we have a three to five year, or a three-year spike. And then it starts going back down again.
Of 160,000 a year.
Yeah, it's, it's a big number. So that's, so any questions on the vehicle replacement plan for, and vehicle and asset replacement plan for the fire department?
ARPA's going to be gone and they're not going to come back to you and say, can I have 135 or 200,000 for SCBA again? So these are the things that we have to start saving for.
If, it will take a little pain out of this if we use ARPA to buy a new pickup utility trailer at UTV to replace engine five in the van. But it won't take a lot of pain out, but it will take some.
But we're going to be on track with at least a good replacement schedule.
And we currently, right now, have the truck replacement committee working on creating a proposal to do just exactly that. I have, I do not know when they plan on coming to Rob and I and Mike on that. But hopefully it won't be too much longer.
I think they met Sunday, so I'll reach out to them and find out.
Yeah, they've been working pretty diligently on it and they're, like, my understanding is they're working pretty hard at getting it done. Because we made it pretty clear to them that they needed to move fairly quickly.
They did get the state bid on the truck. So the, so they have that. That one, I think I gave you copies of that Can-Am. That, that got sold, so that's not available in Rutland anymore, but.
The cost of this stuff, it just absolutely blows my mind. Like I know that's what it costs now, but Jesus, it just.
It's a small vehicle, right? It's a small vehicle.
Honestly, you could buy a Toyota RAV4 for the cost of this right here, a brand new one.
Yeah, except you can't take it up into the woods and beat it.
Well, you can.
You could, yeah, I would agree.
I don't have that one either.
Stop the patient in the trunk.
Well, the seats fold down, so I mean.
I had a 76 Subaru wagon and you don't know where I took some of that sometimes.
Mike, I don't have one of those either.
Here you go. I must've took all your stuff. My kleptomaniac.
This has already been, this is no longer available.
Yeah, it doesn't matter anyway.
It just gives you a kind of a sense of what the price is. The truck was like, I think the truck cabin chassis was 52,000 was the state bid price for a quad cab Ford F350.
Was that gas or diesel?
Gas.
Well, just off the top of my head, I think we should definitely consider ARPA funds. Our fire department has to be A1. Otherwise I'll come with my bale of twine and my duct tape and we'll take care of everything.
Well, that's exactly what I've asked the. Well, that's exactly what I've asked the, um, fire department truck committee to do, has come to us with a proposal that we will at least consider, well, Rob and I first, and if they get past us, then we'll present it to you, to consider using ARPA funds to fund that particular portion of their equipment and, and reduce the fleet by one vehicle.
I, I feel very strongly that we have to have town equipment and fire equipment and everything top-notch.
Without getting off topic, now that we've too far, I do think in the future, we're going to have to look at cost-sharing some of this equipment with other communities. You know, when you look at a vehicle like this, UTV, this isn't going to have an instantaneous response time under any situation, you know, that's, and how much will it get used in a year? If that was owned by Castleton, Polton, Fairhaven, you know, it'd cut the cost by two-thirds for us, and we'd still have it available with almost the same response time, same with a grader, you know, six, 700,000 dollars, is that what a new one is now?
Yeah, for, with the roller, probably around.
I know everybody needs it for the same month in the spring, but you would think that there would be a way to split that with another community.
It's always been the argument of, when it breaks, who's going to, you know, we have to have some agreement that if it breaks, then somebody's going to fix it, or how, how we're going to fix it.
Right, lease it with a maintenance plan.
Yeah.
I mean, this thing is, how old, 35 years old, it's got 12,000 hours?
Yeah.
You know, that's what, we put about 4,000 hours a year on a, on a loader at work, I mean, that's, hardly gets used. But, that's a topic for another day.
Well, just real quick on that, Dick Hall used to do Fairhaven and Castleton, he handled it with one grader, so I don't want to hear that.
He was a private contractor.
He was a private contractor, but he handled it.
Yeah.
You know, he got it done. So, as far as Fairhaven needed it at the exact same time as Castleton, I don't, I don't buy that, I just don't buy that.
Well, you just have to work two shifts, seven days a week.
Well, whatever.
Get it done.
Dick Hall did it, I mean, Dick and Rick did it, so.
Yeah, this stuff has just gotten so expensive.
Absolutely, I agree with you 100%, there's a lot of stuff that we could share with other towns, and we just don't, you know?
I think three select, if three select boards can agree on it, then we could probably move forward with it, but that's, that might be the, that might be the challenge.
Getting two select boards to agree on something had proved to be, do you agree with that, it proved to be challenging? Mary Lee, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Um, so, anything more on highway, before we move on?
I'm good.
And just so you, the, the three capital reserve increases that we've discussed so far, total 160K for this coming year.
And roughly the same for the year two and year three, Dick?
Uh, without, yeah, roughly the same.
Okay, okay.
But retaining the 160, and then adding another 160 beyond that, or so, you know, give or take a few thousand bucks.
Sure.
Mike, you don't know off the top of your head what that adds, what that equates to on the grand list, so 160,000 dollar increase.
Oh, yeah, don't, please don't make me do that math in front of everybody.
Okay.
My shoes off. But I can figure that out for you.
You used to do that all the time. Last I checked, which was about a year ago, Mark, one penny on the tax rate raised, 41,000 dollars. Now, that's probably different now, but not significantly.
We have, we have to know, we're working on that now, so you have what the tax rate would be based on, we really, like, the school budget, that would help, be helpful, but, um, if they have to go over under their 85%, we'll, we'll have some number to, because you have to set the tax rate at some point.
Right.
But that's one penny per hundred.
A hundred, yeah.
Right.
So, if your, your house is only worth 100,000 dollars, you're still talking about 100 dollar increase in taxes, am I correct, or is it 10 dollars?
10 dollars.
10 dollars. So, if you've got a 300,000 dollar house, it's going to be 30 bucks a year more in taxes.
For each penny?
No. Yeah, for each penny, yes, you're correct.
Yeah.
For each penny. So, you're looking at, for a 300,000 dollar property, you're looking at, uh, 120 dollars a year, so 10 dollars a month, which doesn't seem like a lot, but to some people, that could be a lot.
If it was the only tax raise that we were looking at next year, it would probably be palatable, but we're probably going to be looking at a pretty substantial increase in our, uh, school taxes.
And we don't know what gravel's going to cost, and we don't know what diesel's going to cost, and we don't know what our health insurance is going to do every year, it's been minimum double-digit increase in health insurance, and that's a good share of our payroll, as you well know. Health insurance is not cheap.
And the reappraisals won't come into effect this next fiscal, or this fiscal year starting, it'll be the following one, right?
I think at best, yeah. Anything more on highway? All kinds of good news, okay, moving on, let's talk about paving, Mike, I'm just going to hand this off to you.
Lucky me.
Well, no, you, you created this, and I think I understand that it's not significantly different than the other ones, but if you could give us the short version.
You mean you've changed it again, and I got an old one?
No.
Oh, okay.
I've got data on the top of ours. 531.
531. I didn't change that one. So, basically, we took the, we have 30.3.
It's in there somewhere about.
Um, miles of paved road in town, and the average lifespan, we were using 10 years as a, uh, average lifespan of, of a road surface before it has to be resurfaced, and so if you do that math, we have to pave 3.03 miles of road per year just to keep up with the cycle. That doesn't count if a road falls apart before 10 years, because the average lifespan of the roads, I've been going to a lot of training lately, um, because of the recycled asphalt product that the government allows to go into this, into hot mix, um, the roads, the road surfaces aren't, um, withstanding the wear as, to 10 years, it's, they're degrading earlier than that. So, but I use 10 years as a figure, because if I used eight years, it'd be uglier, um, and, um, so, keeping that in mind, I, I used some numbers down in the, um, on the left side, towards the bottom, so the cost, 2024 cost of one mile of two-inch shim and overlay is 136,000, that's with no milling. If you add the milling costs in there, add another, I think it's 35,000, so the cost of milling and paving a mile of road is about 172,000 dollars at today's prices. Um, so, based on that, that's what I used, um, for my figures up top, uh, for each of the fiscal years, um, and we're looking at, basically, again, it goes into that first three years, there's 75,000, the first year, then on top of that, another 75,000, and on top of that, and the next year, 60,000. Then it kind of levels off to about five grand a year, um, out to 2035. So, again, it goes back to the same common theme as the other stuff we've talked about is to get us to a point where it's sustainable, we're behind again, um, and once the road gets to a point where it's falling apart, no amount of crack ceiling's going to stop it from degrading farther, and then we're going to be, instead of resurfacing them with two inches of asphalt, um, we're going to be reclaiming things and taring, which gets to be a lot more expensive. So, it's, I mean, it stands to reason with preventive maintenance, it's cheaper to, um, prevent the stuff from happening and do a little bit at a time versus waiting for it to fall apart and try to fix it all. And, um, there are, there are a couple new, um, applications out there that I would like to try, um, on some of these roads that would cost about 40 to 60% less than, um, regular asphalt application, it's called, um, the, or, uh, chip ceiling, um, so, uh, we went to Pittsburgh and looked at their roads up there, um, I looked at one road that was, for five years, it's five years old, and there's not even a crack in this darn thing. So, it works, uh, whether it's going to work that well, but about five years is about the time you have to resurface, um, again, but it's a, it's a thinner layer, um, on the riding surface, but, uh, from all indications and the stories besides what we saw, talking to other highway folks that use it in the state of Vermont, it's, it's a good application.
Which road in Pittsburgh is five years old?
The Oxbow Road.
Okay, I, I'm, I know the roads in Pittsburgh fairly well, I'll take a ride up there soon.
I know where it is, too, I came from Pittsburgh.
Yeah, so Oxbow has the, that was a, a chip seal over gravel road, and then the road that the transfer station's on, or the highway garage, that road was a chip seal with a rubberized material in it, and that didn't hold up as well as the other one, that one over gravel, for whatever reason.
I would think for these residential streets, it would work great.
Yeah, it just has.
Places that have a lot of truck traffic, maybe not as much, but.
Not so much, yeah.
But we have a lot of places that the only trucks that go on them are our trucks, the highway trucks.
I think Amazon and, um, those type of things are, they're everywhere, you can't throw, swing a dead cat without hitting a, an Amazon truck now.
Yeah, but their GVW is nowhere near what a Van Damme's dump truck is.
Just the, little bit more traffic on, of, a little heavier vehicles, but not like dump trucks and stuff like that, but, um, so that's kind of where, this, but this isn't for shim, this isn't for, um, for chip sealing, this was for regular hot mix asphalt, this new super paved mix that we have to use, that the state of Vermont adopted.
Well, you did exactly what we, you were asked to do, Mike, which was give us worst-case numbers.
Right.
So, it won't, it shouldn't get any worse than this.
I just got a quick question, Mike.
Does a dirt road cost as much as a asphalt road, over a five-year period or 10-year
period? Have you ever weighed out the cost?
We haven't, Jeff is starting to do that now, um, we haven't, it's, we know that there's more maintenance on the road, on the gravel roads, because of potholes and mud season and stuff like that. What I'd like to complete, um, is what we started, is this Route 4A corridor, and down in Blissville, um, we, we paved, um, Cory and Farr and Eagles Nest and David and Mary and all those, because of that reason, is we were spending all this time on a, on a grader, or somebody running around filling a pothole in, and filling a pothole in doesn't work. It, it lasts for about the third vehicle that drives over it, um, and it pushes all the dirt back out of the hole, and you've got to cut the road down below the deepest pothole, and what we're finding is we have poor, poor material in a lot of our roads that had clay in it, so as, what I'd like to do is be able to do what we did on those other roads, is cut the roads down, get good gravel in there, and pave them, because it's less maintenance as far as our crew going out there. So, when they're on the grader fixing potholes on small residential streets like Preston Lane and all those things, they're not out mowing the, the roads and ditching and stuff that, things that will deteriorate a road as well, like changing culverts, ditching, that's, that's what I want them to focus on, rather than taking out the potholes on a small street.
I, I hear that, but what I'm worried about is you're, you're saying we can't afford to take care of our paved roads now, but then you come to us and you want to pave more roads.
I want to try chip seal.
That doesn't make sense into my head.
It, it wouldn't, if you talk out loud, it will, it does not make sense. Um, the.
I don't know how to talk on a table.
But we could push that grader out another five years. But I was looking at, using the chip, the chip sealing, by using some of the application on, on the roads that are in good shape, paved roads that are in good shape, um, we'll save some money, and then we also will have that money to put toward these, these, like Preston and those type of roads, and, and I want to try on, I want to try it on David, uh, in North David, because it's, and go, a road that's flat and really good shape, um, they don't want to do hills, it's just something they don't say it doesn't, isn't good for steep hills and stuff, although Oxbow has one hill on it that.
Oxbow is a hill.
Yeah, the, uh, but there's one that last steep part, uh, where it gets to, back to, uh, gravel is.
David Avenue would be the perfect spot for that.
I, I would, I mean, I, that's where I really like to try it, because I know the road base is in good shape, I know that it's flat, um, and.
Drains well.
Yeah, it's just, it just seems like the, the spot to try, and if we try it there and it holds up for a good five years, you know, now we got our own litmus test, rather than what happened at Pittsburgh or Addison County, um.
You're talking about chip sealing it.
Yeah, chip sealing it, not, it's, it's like 40 to 60% less expensive than, but it has to have a good base.
Will they mobilize for a project that small?
Not, not for that, we, they did give us a, a quote, and if we did David, North David, um, Preston, and Tanya, because Tanya's right there, and we have to, if we don't do it, we've got to drive back and put dirt on it, you know, just, because the, and they would do it for that.
You really need to look into that.
Um, I think that the cost-wise, um, it, it certainly would be cheaper, and I, I'll see, less expensive, I don't want to say cheaper, because that would not be good, but, but less expensive, and we, I think we should try it.
Can we post those roads for weight limit afterwards?
Um, we have the authority to post, post weight limits, um, but, um, I don't know, I don't know how exactly that works, Mark, I have to look into that, as far as like what we can go down to, because state, there's some state requirements on roads.
Yeah, and what are you, what are you posting against, Mark? I just, just, just a question, I mean, what would you, you, oil trucks and propane trucks have to go down.
Yeah.
They have to, yeah.
Forget that.
Right.
Our highway trucks have to go down there, so what are you posting against, I mean?
Yeah, I guess a slim chance that somebody lived there and owned a log truck or something like that, but.
Oh, yeah, you can park it off site someplace, yeah, yeah, okay.
There's not going to be over, any over-the-road tractor-trailers going down that road like they do River Street or Blissville.
Um, and, one of the, one of the things that's not in the paving, if you look at the 2020, I can't read it, um, so the 24 is, is Blissville Road, but the majority of that 177,000 is coming from the state class-two paving grant, so we do have the library that is, was a carryover from last year, um, and so we have some expenses going to have to come out of it, but that, we're not using the 239 that we have in there ourselves, so that will carry over into the next fiscal year. So, as we carry over into the next fiscal year, we got 239 this year, July 1st, we get another 239, and anything that's left out of that 170, I don't know what that's going to be at this point, but, um, it gives us a good, some good footing to, I think, that if you look at fiscal year 26, where it says paving cost 380,000, and then the operating budget's 314, there's a shortfall, but for 314, uh, 100 and, if we don't have to mill, 120, 136, um, 1,662 dollars, and do the division on that, and we, we can, we can get something done. Um, the Village, they're paving Route 4A through the Village, that was what I was been holding off to come back to the board on, is I'd like to do the side streets mechanic seminary, Elm, Mill, and Glenbrook, when they come through and pave the Route 4A, so they're all done at the same time, and, because it's going to, when you're trying to marry things up, it's, it's causes, it has more potential for the stuff to fail, but if they're doing it at the, if we do it at the same time when they're paving Route 4A, um, we might even get a, might even get some money, save some money.
Yeah, they're already here, so.
The, the, Vtrans contracts, people that are on Vtrans contracts, don't tend to, uh, be able to incorporate that stuff in there, we'd have to have separate contracts, but, um, it's, it's worth asking.
Does everyone understand the paving? Questions? Questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, you were asked about costs, and so the other thing that we're, we're struggling with is, um, and right now the complaints are coming in left and right on dust.
Yeah.
So.
On what?
Dust, dust control. Um, so, our, our goal now is when we, we have to resurface the, or not resurface, we have to grade the gravel roads, we're not going to sprinkle calcium chloride on top of the road, because it just, after a few, you know, a couple days of cars going over it, a lot of it just wa, it gets pushed off the road, what, all the training that we've been through says, when you grade and you put down gravel, you mix it in with the gravel, and it will, it's a binder, and it'll last longer, so that's how we're going to approach it. So, when the people are calling Jeff, saying, can you come to my road and put calcium chloride on, he's like, it's really expensive, this is what we're doing, this is our plan, and trying to keep them at bay right now, and hope for rain.
Do we have a water truck that we can?
We, we do now, we have, we have the water truck, um, but that, in a hot day like this, that'll be gone in no time, and I'd rather have them ditching and changing culverts and that kind of stuff, um, so, but that's, uh, everything that we do about gravel roads, whether it's springtime maintenance, how much stone we, how much money we spent in stone every spring to put in the roads, so, you know, get them so they're passable, um, and then you go to grade that road, and you, you can't have big stone in it, so we have to be, we have to be mindful of that, and it's, it's a lot of work for gravel roads.
Is there have to be additional grant money to cover some of this paving cost?
Um, every about five years is when we're, when we come into that, their equity or their, they say, so it's equitable, um, distribution of the money, so it's about every five years. I was talking to, um, Ross Gallin from the state, and their, their ARPA funds are starting to dry up, too, they're going to have to obligate them by the end of this year, and they're, they're pretty much. And they're, they're pretty much, they've been cutting back on some of the grants now too. So where it was, you're going to get thirty thousand, now you're going to get eighteen thousand. So I think as we see the ARPA funds kind of dry up, I think these, some of these grants won't be so, they won't be so handy. They won't be passing around these grants so freely.
So if we're set with highway, we're going to move on. And that was with highway in there as well. We're up to two thirty-five now, which is.
Added.
Yeah. Which is eight percent, seven percent of the budget. Does that sound about right, Mike?
Yeah, less, a little less than ten percent, yeah. About eight percent.
Yeah, because we're four thirty-five or four point three or something was last year's budget. Does that sound right? Or this current year's budget?
Four point four, yeah.
Four point four. So yeah, it's about eight percent, maybe nine, which is substantial.
Be nice to keep it single digits. It just looks really bad when you get into two columns.
Yeah, well, it's, I just wanted everyone to start thinking about this because we've got to wrestle with this this fall.
What it does include is the wages, benefits and anything else that's going to go up, fuel, anything else is going to go up.
And we're, I'm pretty confident that wages are under control. We have a new five-year contract with ASME and our, our police contract has still got, what, three years left? And they're pretty stable and pretty, and it gives us the ability to plan ahead and they're not horribly huge increases every year. But the one that you can never control is healthcare. And I don't think there's been a year since I've been on this board it wasn't less, it was ever, it was never less than ten percent.
Budget's eight, I mean, it's never's eight.
It's usually closer to twenty. You can, you probably can deal with the same thing in your business, Mark.
Twelve fifteen every year.
So I'm going to ask for public comments about the three or four items we've just discussed. If we have any public comments.
I'm wondering if I have to return the new car I ordered today.
Helen, I, I don't.
Print some payment.
The whole point behind doing this is to make sure everyone is aware and then we've got to figure out how to, how to mitigate some of this so it's not quite this bad. But I asked Mike to present us with worst-case numbers and he did that. So maybe we can find a way to make it less expensive. I don't know that we can, but certainly open to suggestions.
Coin drops?
Every day, all day.
Just put up a toll gate.
Yeah, I was just going to say a toll booth.
All right, so we're going to move on. Next item, if we have no public comments, we're going to move on to vehicle replacement pro, yeah, proposal to replace the two thousand seventeen Ford Interceptor. Rob and I met with the public, or with the police department as a public safety committee last week or the week before.
Couple of weeks ago, I think.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago. And we were happy with their proposal and agreed to, to send it on to you. So did, Mary Lee, did you get this in your?
Okay.
Super. So did you get a chance to review this? And, and at this point in time, I'm going to hand it off to Justin if he wants to make a short presentation and then we'll open it up to the board.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Dick. So as you see my vehicle replacement proposal, we had an unexpected engine issue with our two, two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer. Right now, based on R and D's and what Formula Ford's advising, we're looking at roughly five thousand to repair. And that's just based off what they know so far. Obviously, if they dig into that, they might find more wrong with that as well. So basically, based on the year of that vehicle and the current mileage, we did not think it's fiscally responsible to put that kind of money into that vehicle based that it's due for replacement this year. So what we're proposing is the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three Ford Interceptor. And I know we went with a Chevy Tahoe with our last purchase. But based on that vehicle, those went up roughly twelve thousand over the last year. It's a new, it's a new vehicle. Everyone's getting it. So with the install prices and the current vehicle, so that's up about twelve thousand. So that's way out of our ballpark. So what our proposal is, is using the same company that we got the Chevy Tahoe through, which is McGovern Municipal in Massachusetts. They were very good. They have vehicles already on their lot, already police packaged. Our proposal, I know it's, I know we're in two thousand twenty-four, but our proposal is for two thousand twenty-three. Reason being is they, they obviously still have brand new ones on their lot, about three hundred of them. They did extend a discount for that recently. I know Dick and Rob, I gave you a quote when we first met. I did find out that there was some cost issues. They were trying to make a little money on us. So I did get that new quote dropped about nineteen hundred dollars. So the new quote that you guys have in front of you is the accurate number. And then what would happen is we would purchase that vehicle out of our current capital reserve, which we have enough money for. That vehicle would be transferred to Island Tech Services, which would be the install service that we would use. We've used this gentleman before with the Chevy Tahoe, very impressed with his work. It's a very seamless process for us and it took a lot of the kind of legwork out for me. So I can, I can stand by his work. I have the quote for that is also attached, which is a little over sixteen thousand for the upfitting cost for that. And that would come out of our two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal capital improve, or capital reserve account for that part of the purchase. So you should have the three, the three quotes, the interceptor utility, the F-150 and the Chevy Tahoe. So those were also attached to your packets. Yeah, I think that's, is that short enough for you? Do you guys have any questions?
I think that was adequate, Justin. Thank you.
Okay.
Open it up to questions from the board.
So Justin, you didn't think there was an improvement in quality or usability of the Tahoe over the interceptor?
I love the Tahoe. I think the Tahoe, I would, I would love to replace it, this car with a Tahoe. You know, ba, my years here, I've driven a lot of different police cars. The Tahoe is certainly, not just because it's brand new and shiny, but the Tahoe certainly has, has blown me out of the water with, with its abilities. The, the, the cost at the time was perfect and it, it's just all around is a, is a greater quality vehicle for us. However, the price tag is, is the issue. So I just saw a quote that Rutland County Sheriff's got and it was eighty-four thousand So that obviously isn't, isn't in our, in our ballpark for sure. But the Tahoe, I think certainly is a, is a much better option for us. However, these new, we've seen, we have a two thousand twenty and a two thousand twenty-three Ford Interceptor. We have not seen the issues with these vehicles that we were seeing in the two thousand seventeen models. Rob, I know you know a little bit more engine stuff than I do with that specific model. We're not, we're not seeing those same issues with these newer Fords. So I, I think maybe they rectified that issue with that engine. You know, the two thousand seventeen miles, we were, we were replacing wheel bearings. We probably done them four or five times on, on those vehicles. So our two thousand twenty currently that we have, we have, I think, seventy thousand miles on it. We haven't even put a wheel bearing in it. So, but does that answer your question, Mark?
It does, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. I would, like I said, I would prefer a Tahoe just based on, based on me having that car since November. I, I think it's a much better vehicle for, for what we need. However, the cost is, as we've discussed in the last hour, the cost of that is, is crazy. So.
The upfits are a lot more as well.
What's that?
So the outfit is a lot more as well. It's not just the difference of forty-four thousand to fifty-one.
Yeah, correct. So a lot of the, the, the parts and pieces for the upfitting is crazy. And we did see some increases with the Ford as well. But obviously like our, our install stuff is vehicle specific and the cost is just, has just gone crazy with, with the Tahoe. But.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, would you please make a motion, Rev?
I'm sorry, you said the board, I just, I didn't.
Okay, sorry, Mike.
The, the money that they have in the reserve does count the ten thousand, which was seven thousand from the constable, sailed to the constable and three thousand from the car to Fairhaven. So that, with that ten thousand added, they got enough to buy the car outright. So. And the one that, the seventeen that's got time and chain issues or whatever, I don't know how much it's worth, but we'll, I guess we'll attempt to sell it, maybe to Brown's Auto Sausage.
It's not going to be worth much.
Yeah, it's so, we'll, we'll have to get what we can out of it, but that'll add some money back into the reserve too. Hey, Justin?
Yes, Mike?
Your quote on page seven, up seven, it's got the wrong address on there. So if you, if they could correct that for our records, that would be best.
The Island Tech quote?
Yes.
Okay.
Says fifteen fifty-six Main Street, I think it says.
Oh, sixteen fifty-five, okay.
Sixteen fifty-five, yeah.
Oh, that was the, the temporary offices that we moved out of several years ago.
Yes, I'll get, I'll get that changed. And also, Mike, if I could, just one more quick second. Some of the equipment, I know I put this kind of some in the proposal, but some of the equipment out of this outgoing two thousand seventeen is fairly new. For example, the radar, the in-car camera, and obviously the radios and stuff like that. The computer mount will all be transferred. Like the computer mount, I think is the only issue. We'll just have to get a mounting bracket. They, they hooked the same bolts as the, the seats and the passenger seats. So that's like a hundred dollar part. But some of the equipment out of that outgoing car is going to be used for this new vehicle if you guys approve that. So we are trying to save some costs as much as we can on that as well.
Two quick questions, Justin. Is the two thousand seventeen still being used?
It is currently. R and D's does not think it's destined for this world much longer. Once we start to see some, some running issues and stuff like that, we're going to end up grounding it just for liability reasons. If it breaks down the way to a call, then, you know, the ramifications of that. But, so as of currently, it's, it's still running, but we will be grounding it if the condition worsens before this, so.
I understand it's running today, but there's no guarantee it'll be running tomorrow. Is that pretty accurate?
That's very accurate, yes.
Second question is, what's the lead time on this new vehicle? Best guess?
Yeah, so they're saying about two to three months. So the vehicle itself is in stock. The vehicle itself is on a lot in Massachusetts. So, and that comes with, on the quote, it comes with just the basic things that we would get if we ordered it directly from Ford. So the, the vehicle itself is in stock, so we don't have to order that. The lead time on the install is about two to three months. And, and I think if, you know, I, I know Mike, the guy that I use, if I explain that, hey, we got a vehicle going out, it's, it's not going to last, that he would, he would help us out, so.
Okay.
So roughly, roughly two to three months.
All right, thank you, Justin.
Yep.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the quote from McGovern that was in the vehicle replacement proposal and it says forty-four thousand five seventy-seven thirty-five, but in the purchase order in that document, it says forty-two six fifteen thirty-five.
That's the nineteen hundred that.
Yeah, Justin said he beat him up on price a little bit.
But if I entered this into public record, it's going to be a, there's a discrepancy there. So we may have to fix something, Justin, so it doesn't show forty-four or somehow we, maybe the minutes can be refilled. I don't know, something that, because this will be out there and this will be out there and someone will say that they're not the same.
You, Justin, is there?
Yeah, I did, I did give Karen the updated quotes last week with an updated vehicle proposal that would reflect those, those costs. I don't know if maybe that got stuck into your packet or.
Does everybody show forty-four on theirs?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I gave those to her last Friday. Those were supposed to be swapped out with the current forty-two along with the new vehicle proposal with the new quote and everything.
So we have a, we have in my packet a purchase and sales agreement dated April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So there's one that's a newer version that reflects the nineteen hundred dollars less?
There, there is, yes. And that was, that was provided, well, Friday before last, before this week.
I, I have a, I have a purchase order in here that's dated five twenty-eight. That's for forty-two six fifteen.
Is that the right number, Justin?
Yeah, I redid the purchase order with that new quote when I got it before I brought that over.
Okay, thank you.
Purchase and sales agreement is in the package here that shows a price of forty-four eight ninety-five and then a discount of a thousand, oh, that, yeah, I'm sorry, that's still the old one, yeah.
Yeah, I get, I get the new one in mind. It has the forty-two six fifteen dated five twenty-eight, but you don't have an actual purchase order that has?
We have a purchase order that reflects the right.
With the correct number.
All right.
So are you all set, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
If you're ready, Rob.
So I would make a motion to approve purch, purchase order zero five two zero three nine to McGovern Municipal HQ for forty-two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents for the two thousand twenty-three Ford Explorer.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
They're moved in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order zero five two zero three five to Island Tech Services for the sum of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars and forty-eight cents for upfitting the two thousand twenty-three Ford Explorer Interceptor utility.
I'll second.
They're moved in seconded to authorize a payment for upgrading the police car or outfitting the police car. All in favor or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So Mike, you're authorized to go buy a police car.
All right, thank you.
So now we're going to move on to select word comments. Mary Lee?
You're fast, you're done.
I realize that.
No, I have no comments.
Rob?
Well, I got to come up with three and a half hours of comments here, so let me think about it for a minute. I don't, I don't have, I don't have anything.
Mark?
I have no comments this evening.
Bob?
I have no comments other than, Mark is going to fill in at the Rutland County Saw ways district meeting on Wednesday night for me.
Okay.
Just so you guys all know.
Mark knows that, I'm sure.
He does.
I do.
Yeah.
And I'm all set. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn at seven twenty-nine.
Second it.
They're moved in seconded, we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.